Good afternoon and welcome to our warrant review for the special town meeting that is scheduled for this coming Monday, October 27th at 7:00 PM at the high school auditorium. And we are broadcasting this show on cable access and we do have a few folks in the audience. The purpose of this show is to go over the warrant articles that will be voted on by the voters at the town meeting on Monday. And we have our appropriate staff here to provide a brief overview of these items. So we will start right away with Article 1, and that is an FY-26 additional capital budget request. And I'm going to cover that one. And we, so we've had a few requests for additional capital improvement requests. It has gone through the capital improvement committee and been approved by them, and it's also gone through AdCom. And my understanding is AdCom has voted to support all articles, but their publication has not yet been finalized. We expect it any minute. So the first item on the CIP request was a conservation vehicle. Right now, there is no vehicle. It's been expected that the conservation agent uses their own personal vehicle for which we have to pay mileage, and it really isn't appropriate, especially considering the stewardship and whatnot that needs to be involved in the use of this vehicle. So that request is for $42,500 out of free cash. The second item is from the fire department, and that's a brush truck replacement. And this is, I believe, is this a one lease payment?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So this is a lease payment for the first year, $160,000 in free cash. And according to the fire department, this is an important part of their fleet, particularly as we deal with more wildfires and forest fires. But the benefit to this vehicle is that it can also be used for urban uses and will assist in our ISO insurance rating. So...
Are we supposed to ask questions as we go along, or?
If you have a que... Yeah.
I think you go along and ask the questions now.
What does that mean? Joan, do you have a question?
Yes.
Okay. Could you, could you come up to the podium, please? And you have to speak into the microphone. Otherwise, the folks at home can't hear you.
I can't yell?
Nope. If you want to take a chair and sit right there, that works. We can get you a chair.
Over here?
Yes.
I can.
We got it. We're going to get you a chair.
I'd like to ask about, let me see if you can sit if you want. Oh, why, why this vehicle is being bought on a lease? Not bought. It's being given with...
Lease.
We are purchasing a lease rather than the actual vehicle. So have you analyzed, not you, the fire department, how many of the vehicles are leased, how many are not, and why would they lease some and not lease the others?
Sure. I'm going to turn to either our finance director, or we have our fire chief here to answer those questions.
So this is a lease-to-buy agreement. It's essentially a five-year agreement. In recent years, we've done this for the fire engines and the ambulances.
Oh, at the end, we own it then?
Yeah, after five, after five years, yeah. It's just to spread out rather than paying it all in one year, yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Good question. All right. And then the next item is minibuses, two minibuses. This is for the school department. And having sat through the meetings on that, our understanding is that there's been a lot more use of these minibuses. They're used every day, year-round, to shuttle kids to and from all over. They go from one school to another for services. And this is $275,000 out of free cash. The next vehicle is a compact track loader. This is for the DPW, and that is $60,000 in free cash. So those are the free cash items. For a total of $537,500. Then we go down to other fund requests and the out-of-the-water SRF loan. This is something, this is more of a technicality. At the last town meeting, the town did approve the PFAS plant, the second PFAS plant, but our bond council, when reviewing the paperwork, noted that it had not gone through the CIP process. And anything over a certain amount, $25,000 in five years, requires CIP. This came in at the very last minute, and we did not get a chance to run it through CIP. We're hoping the residents will continue to support this. The only change is procedural, where we're going to, we have to come through CIP and then revote it at town meeting. Yes, Joan, come to the front, please. You might as well just sit there.
I have a lot of questions.
Okay.
So I happened to listen to the selectmen's meeting where this was proposed, and right after the meeting, I called a couple of members, and you know me, I kind of chastised them. I don't think you analyzed this enough. What I'm understanding, and maybe it's wrong, is that you've raised the individual analysis of certain purchases that are under the capital improvement, what is it called, capital improvement budget?
Mm-hmm.
And it was like $25,000 and minimum or maximum, whatever, of five, five-year life?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what we're addressing here?
Yes.
What you're talking about?
Yes.
So I'm not sure exactly because I can't remember. There's so many facts and figures. I don't know how you keep track of it all, but that you increased, I would have thought you would have, might have doubled it. And when I heard what they were talking about, tell me the figures. They went from two. And it went from $25,000 to what?
With respect to what?
The new proposal of what fits into a special...
I don't think we've changed, we haven't changed it.
The selectmen came, had to come before the selectmen if it was over $25,000.
Correct.
Now, did that change? Did that change?
It did not change.
Is someone else in that meeting that was like that?
It was a gift account.
Oh.
And I think it was anything over $100, and I can't remember where we ended up, 100, 250 or 100. It's, we're talking...
Well, there's nothing to do with the capital improvement then?
No.
That stay the same, the $25,000?
Five years.
And the five years.
That would require a bylaw change. That would be a town meeting, that would require a town meeting vote. The CIP is governed by town meeting.
Okay.
There's been no change.
But that has no change.
No.
I thought they had a discussion about that, that meeting. I wrote notes, and I can't, there must be something else like that.
Probably the gift account. We did change that, but we're talking $100 down on that one.
Okay. Well, it makes sense then, $25,000?
Yes.
It could go up a little bit to 50?
It could.
And whatever, I mean, just to be more practical and maybe not have to spend so much time. I would think doubling would be okay, but the thing that I was listening to, whatever the discussion was, it was for a much larger jump. And I'm pretty sure it's not the gift...
Yeah, it's not, it's not something I'm remembering right now.
It's in an older town meeting.
You should just stay there, Joan. Stay there. I'm sure you're going to have another question. Okay. So this, going back to this last discussion, is the PFAS plant. This is a revote required because we didn't check the box on going through CIP. This is through a SRF loan, a loan by the state. And Chris, do you just want to give a very bulleted list of why, why we, what the good thing is about an SRF loan?
Sure. So this is a state revolving fund loan for the purposes of PFAS treatment. It's actually a 0% interest loan from the state with principal forgiveness. So we are utilizing this loan on our first PFAS plant, which is under construction and expected to be completed in the spring, early spring. We have our second plant in design right now, which will actually probably start construction in the spring. So we'll go from the first plant being completed, and we'll start construction on the second one. We're expecting about 10% principal forgiveness on, on these loans, which is also a good, good benefit. So this is something where if we were to borrow this money now, we would not be getting it 0% interest, so, and there would be no principal forgiveness. So we're utilizing that state fund to be in compliance with both EPA and DEP regulations to remove those PFAS chemicals from the water system before it goes out to the public.
What number are you on?
Nine, number nine.
Still on Article 1.
I thought we're on Number 2.
Right. So one of the things we discussed at CIP, in the CIP committee, was the SRF borrowing for the PFAS plant. So it's not listed as a capital item because it's a separate borrowing item.
What is? What is, are you talking about?
The PFAS water treatment plan borrowing.
Oh, my apologies. I'm looking at my old notes.
Is that number nine that you're talking about?
Number nine.
Yes. Yeah, so that'll be, that's a separate item. We did discuss it at CIP as part of the process.
Didn't we vote, we voted on that last time?
You did vote it.
Zero financing, and that's why we did it.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
And then also you're saying we're getting 10% back as well.
There's a, there's a principal forgiveness part of that as well, so there is some...
Why don't we redo it because we missed wording?
Can you come up to the microphone? I'm getting, I'm getting, grab a seat if you want. So as I explained, this was something that our bond council discovered that we, anything over $25,000 has to go through the CIP process, the capital improvement. It did not, because it came in so last minute before last town meeting, so this is really procedural. Nothing's changing on the original proposal voted at the last town meeting. We just have to revote it so that our bond council is satisfied with the procedure.
Okay. So we just have to revote, and hopefully everybody says, "Okay," again.
Correct. Yes, we're fingers.
Okay.
Chris, do you want to just cover, let me just make sure it's in this one, I think it is. My apologies, I guess, I was looking at the notes. So we have one last thing on the CIP, and that has to do with the sewer and the community center. Do you want to just give a quick highlight on that?
Sure. So when we came to town meeting last May, we had a dollar amount to connect the community center to sewer. So that was a sewer main extension project from the center of town up to 76 Main Street so that the community center could connect to sewer. The number that we brought was literally just put the pipe from one end to the other and connect the building. The sewer commission wanted to spend some more money on that project and actually make it easier for future expansion. So we had actually a base bid and a bid alternate as part of that project when we bid it out. The bid alternate, some of that work actually has been completed so that future expansion of that system can be done. So the sewer commission is looking to supplement the general fund, pay back the general fund for some of that work that was done in order to make that sewer main easily accessible for future expansion to all the side streets, as well as there were some, some internal change orders that were needed to actually make that a complete project to get the building connected. There were some items that were missed in our, in our base bid that we had to add on. So the sewer commission, through our retained earnings, is looking to supplement the general fund on that project and pay back the general fund for some of that additional work that took place.
So that's Article 1. Now we're on to Article 2, and that has to do with the fire stabilization fund and transferring to the fire budget. Marie's going to cover that for us.
So this article, so we're seeking to transfer what's remaining in the fire stabilization fund into the fire budget. As you may recall at the spring town meeting earlier this year, town meeting voted to establish a new revolving fund for this outside repair program. So at the time, there was still money remaining in that stabilization fund. So right now, we're just seeking to transfer what's remaining in that into the fire budgets so that they can use that money. And then going forward, they'll be using that revolving fund. So this fire stabilization fund will essentially go away. So you won't be, see, this will essentially be that last transfer out of that fund, and it's $260,000 that we have left in there.
Yes, Joan.
So is there a place you can go and look up who has a revolving fund and, not who, department? Because you seem to be, well, using it. Everybody wants a revolving fund now because they can get monies in, and then, we actually don't even see the monies spent out. I guess they can use it revolving like in each department, and it's not a town meeting item. And in other words, I think less is public. It's more what the department wants to do. And, and one of them really, I'm really concerned about is, I think they're all doing it now. It seems that our fire department has discovered that since we have such a wonderful department down there, mechanics places to put the vehicles, that we could do this repairs and different things for other towns and so forth. So I'm just looking at it as a little, not business going on, but it's brilliant. I mean, we're benefiting from it, so I'm not complaining that we're wasting money, but I just wonder about this, is we have this like separate business there. Now, it just sounds like you said, we used to have a stabilization fund, and now it's going to be called a revolving fund? And we're doing that with, the transition seemed to be this year, when I listened at town meeting, this group wanted a revolving fund, and some of them never had one and so forth. So I'm trying to get this, what's the word, transparency, all that kind of thing, and, keep it under control, I guess.
I mean, there are controls with the revolving fund. So town meeting has to authorize us to establish one, which happened last spring.
Right.
On a yearly basis, town meeting also votes a spending limit for each of these funds. And then if you look at our bylaws, we have a table of all our revolving funds, and in, under there, you can see who's authorized to spend from the fund, what are the revenues that are collected and the allowed expenditures.
Does that put in the town...
It's in our code.
...statistics each year?
When, well, when you establish a new fund, in previous years, we would show the whole table, yes.
We voted on it. But I'm saying, is it really that evident? And I, this whole concept has been bothering me since we started doing that last town meeting, and, and that's exactly what I said to myself, oh, boy, you know, this, these monies can go in and out of that department more easily, and it's not as observed. I just want to keep track of them. And people say, if my taxes are too much, we spend too much. I know. This makes money for us. I, I kind of grant that, but I just don't think it should be all that secret-like. It's not secret, but it's hard to get the information.
It's not a secret, and it's very, it's very document, if I may. It's not a secret. It's, it's well documented. You can, like Marie said, you can look at the code and see what the limits are that are actually voted in by town meeting. And it is, it's, there's, is an efficiency to it. I mean, and there's always been a risk. For example, in the past, what if, you know, we pay out of the general fund for all these expenditures related to other town repairs? And what if, at some point on town meeting floor, someone decides, well, we're not going to let them transfer it back into that budget, the stabilization? They're actually, like you say, they're making money to help support operations of the community, and we are running, it's, it's an inefficiency. Every, every year, we have to explain why we're taking this money, moving it over here. People wonder why. It's really a more efficient way of doing it, but it is well-controlled, well-managed. There are strong limits on it, and there's absolutely nothing not transparent about it.
Well, I think it should be each department at town meeting announce exactly they, what they had go through this revolving fund and what they end up with, like at the end of the year. In other words, a little report in addition to what else. And I, I say to town meeting because it seems like the only one that we really have the public involved, even though it's too few people, should be many, many more, but I just think there should somehow have been some kind of a transparent report each year as to how that revolving fund interacted with that department. Is there, I saw nothing that would guarantee that.
In the town report, there is a, in the back section, there's a, several spreadsheets that detail all of our other special revenue funds. So you'll see the beginning balance, revenues, expenditures, and ending balance for all of these funds. So that is in the town report.
We never get to look back here. People grab it, okay. All right.
It's available. And I think if it's a concern, then you should, you know, let, if the community feels that way, we can work on it. But it's, this is the first we're hearing of it, and we're actually rather proud of our fire department for their innovation and what they're doing, providing a service and also supplementing the budget. So this is the first we're hearing of this concern. But we're going to move on to Article 3 now, and which is another revolving account. So Marie, if you want to explain this?
So this was a school request. So as I stated, anytime we're looking to establish a new revolving fund, it requires a town meeting vote. You also have to establish an annual expenditure limit. So this fund here, it's for the school program. It's for their summer institute program. And from what I understand, they run a summer program. It's host, it's run by the school teachers or school staff. It's available for Foxborough teachers, but also any, any teacher that works for the school. And so they collect, they charge participation fees. This money will go into this fund, and it will be used to cover the expenses related to that, that same program. Let me see here.
Looks like they have a $25,000 limit.
Yeah, the limit we're looking to set is $25,000. Did you want to add anything, Ken?
No, it's, it's not just for Foxborough teachers. It's something where we have as many as sometimes 26 other districts that have joined us for those professional development opportunities. So it, it positively impacts us with other, you know, communities that join us, as well as impacting positively our own educators.
The other reason that I requested this revolving fund was because they have had the summer institute in the past, but this, the summer institute money was in what the preschool revolving account, and it really should be separated out so that you can really do an accounting of which program has expenditures and revenues, because each revolving fund is only supposed to be used for the purpose of that revolving fund. So this really specifies the preschool revolving is in one, and the summer school is another. So Stephanie Burrows, who does a great job with that summer institute, will have a much easier way to account for her revenue and expenditures in that revolving fund.
Great. Okay.
I suggest that maybe the advisory committee should become much more aware of this. And they do like the background checks for town meeting and so forth, and I would think somehow should be much more of a requirement for them to maybe get this kind of a report before the town meeting and keep track of what's going in, in and out of these revolving funds. So I just think, as I say, it's all happening, and I just want to make more of it and try to see if the town people, residents, do care about where their money is spent and how it's spent, that this is just a better, fuller picture to be able to include stuff like this, too.
Article 4 is regarding a transfer from free cash to the health budget. And I could, Marie's probably going to speak to this one, but I could just say that this is, we get a grant, and as part of the public health excellence grants, it's been in town a couple of years now, we are able to charge a 15% expenditure, of actual expenditures administrative fee. And so we have done so this year, and that money just gets deposited in the general fund, and it will just sit there. What we're hoping to do is move it out of the general fund and move it into the health department budget to be used for opioid, substance abuse, and other health-related initiatives that they do, like education and outreach. Is that where, is that correct, Marie?
Yeah, that, that covers it all. So we're looking to transfer, so that 15% of actual expenditures came out to be $48,000, so that's what the transfer will be for. And this basically will allow the town to use the, the funds from the opioid settlements to eventually hire a full-time substance abuse coordinator, which has been determined that that's a huge need in this town. So we basically found a way for health to use money from one of their existing grants for their uses, and that frees up now the opioid settlement funds for a full-time person there.
Okay. So now we're on to Article 5, and that's a transfer to general stabilization fund. Marie, do you want to explain that?
So our general stabilization fund, this is our rainy day fund. So as our budget grows, so should your reserves. So we're looking to transfer $500,000 into this stabilization fund. As of June 30th, we had $5.1 million there, which was about 5.5% of the budget. Our financial policies state that we will maintain between 5% to 7% of our general fund operating budget in this reserve. So we're looking to put some more money into that fund in preparation of our FY-27 budget. I guess I could cover the next one as well.
Sure.
Article 6 is another stabilization fund. So this one is our capital stabilization fund. For this one, we're also looking to transfer 100, 500,000. We currently have 565,000. And right now, our financial policy for this fund is that we will carry a balance in here of at least 100,000 with a goal of $2 million. And this fund will essentially be used to pay for the initial cost of the Taylor School renovation. So the intent here is to build this fund up, to pay for that initial 1.5 to 2.5 million, and therefore end up having to borrow less for that project. So that's what we're trying to do here with this fund.
Okay. Article 7 has to do with the police, oh, hi, Joan.
Hi. Is there a chart somewhere they could put who the revolving fund is attached to, which department? And now, we've got general stabilization fund, we actually do have. We've, we've wiped out at least one, the fire department stable, I think, what we did here earlier, or not we, but, you know, what the, the subject was...
Yeah, this is the general, this is the general stabilization fund for the whole town.
Is there a chart of these funds and, and how the monies, as I say, they each have their own budget, and we vote on those at town meeting. So then, a lot of, we've had a couple of revolving funds, and it's, you know, like the recreation, they get paid for certain things, and that was obvious. But now we're doing like this transition, it seems to me. We're seeing that it's valuable in a lot of ways, and I, and it's just sort of like happening, not haphazardly, but this department decides we should be doing that and so forth. So I'm, I'm just wondering if there's some kind of a chart or something to get this concept that the voters can understand, or people in, in town. It's mind-boggling in some ways. I, you've got two on general stabilization fund that says the same title, and almost says the same thing in the article, and I can't...
So these two...
One says for reserve fund balances, and the other one says for capital reserve fund balances. Those seem like so much the same, and yet they're different and what have you, so, oh.
Yeah, so revolving funds are different.
It's really naked confusing for us.
Revolving funds are different than stabilization funds. Revolving funds are for specific departments. Stabilization funds are for the town as a whole.
Slow down, I know, but...
So revolving funds are for departments only, and those funds, at town meeting each year, you vote a yearly spending limit for each one. There is a chart in our town code for each of our revolving funds. It has our, the department that's responsible for them, the revenues that go into it, the expenditures that go into it. For stabilization funds, these funds have existed for, even before my time here. These are our reserves, we're required to have reserves. When we go to borrow money, the bond rating agencies like to see that you have reserves. So if something goes wrong, you have the money, essentially a saving, it's the equivalent of a savings account, if you will call it that. And as your budget grows, you should be putting more money into these reserves or stabilization funds to prepare you for an emergency. Now, as I stated earlier, in our town report, we also show our stabilization fund balances. So any balance that we have on the town, on the school side, those are all shown in the town report. We show the beginning balance, revenue, expenditures, and ending balance. If you would like, I could send you that, send that directly to you.
As I say, I think we're going through transition here, and I just want to kind of clarify it for everybody. And the best thing that's going to happen, and has already for the town, are positive, but I don't know, I just think this, every time something shows up, I'm not really sure what it, what it's saying, so, thank you.
Thanks, Joan. So Article 7 has to do with the, the collective bargaining agreement for the police department. This was, as you may recall, last town meeting, we voted six of the seven town-side union contracts, and the police were the one that remained. We were fortunate to be able to settle with the police team earlier this year, and this, this vote is to approve the agreement. Some of the highlights have to do with the cost of living adjustment and a 10-year step increase, some, some language regarding a night shift differential and split shifts to benefit the police chief and his appointment of employees, and a clarification on the promotion process. So we, we are thrilled that we were able to get this final, this viable bargaining agreement resolved, and we look forward to moving forward with that at town meeting. Chief, did you want to say anything? I don't think...
No, I'm just here in case somebody had a question.
Article 8?
Owen.
Okay, come on up, Rafaela.
Hi. I just wanted to know, you know, it's a premium contract with the... Is the microphone tight? Just on? It's only for people at home.
Yeah, I just wanted to know over the three years what the percentages increase would be in the contracts.
In regards to the cooler or the stipends or the shift differential?
Right, well...
The cooler is three, two and a half, two and a half?
Yes.
Use the microphone, please.
The microphone doesn't work.
I'm just writing it down. Okay.
I'm using it.
Okay, so the cooler's three, two and a half, two and a half. The 10-year step increase... The 10-year step increase?
That's just a 2% to address.
And wasn't there something about a 1% increase for something called post? And I wasn't sure what that was.
So...
And I just heard about it word about, so I'm asking you.
So I'll be real brief. In 2020, the legislature, the legislators enacted the Post Officers Standards and Training Commission, and within that guidelines, they covered certifying, setting standards, investigating misconducts, and decertifying offices. And within that large scope of training requirements, the JLMC has come out and said that a lot of these changes that were asked or put upon the offices impacted and were subject to bargaining. So the town, in conjunction with the union, addressed those changes consistent with other communities that we're seeing.
So is that 1% of fund?
It's 1% for year one, and then it's .5 and .5 for the following two years.
So is it go to the offices or is it in a fund? It's to help them with any legal fees, is that it, or?
No, not at all.
Oh, I didn't know what it was.
No, it's compensation for all the changes between their training, their hiring...
Okay, good, all right.
Internal affairs, all sorts of labor relations items that were, are subject to negotiation.
When it was explained to me by someone, they had mentioned legal fees, and I said, I thought unions and we would help take care of that, but okay, thank you.
It clarifies it.
Okay.
Thank you, chief. Okay, article eight has to do with the authorization for multi-year contracts. Marie, you could cover that one?
So this initially came in as a request from the school side. So this article basically is seeking to authorize both the town manager and the superintendent via the school business manager to award contracts up to five years, excluding personnel contracts. So what we've seen on the procurement side is oftentimes when you, right now, the law restricts us to three-year contracts. What we have found in recent years, on our side, it's with software, things like that, on the school side with textbooks, education materials. Oftentimes, the vendors will give you a larger discount when you sign up for the five versus the three years. Because the chapter 30B, which is the law that governs procurement, restricts you to three years, the only way to get around that is to have a town meeting vote. And we added some additional controls here, so going forward, whenever the superintendent or the town manager would like to award a five-year contract, they either have to go through the school committee and get a majority vote, four or five members, or the town manager has to go through the select board. So there's a little bit of control there as well.
And just to clarify, this is not for personnel, it's just for goods and services, so it wouldn't apply to town staff. Okay, article nine. Chris, this is what we kind of touched on earlier, but it's the revote of the PFAS plan, if you just want to give a high-level con, in case anyone was following along.
So as we dove into a little bit earlier, we voted this language in this past May at town meeting. However, due to the state giving us notification very late that we were eligible in receiving this funding, we did not walk it through the CIP process as is required by our local policies. So really, this is a procedural, procedural issue where we have talked about it during CIP. The CIP committee has recommended this be approval, approved. The language now needs to be revoted. This is a $16.5 million borrowing. This will build our second PFAS water treatment plant. This is something that is required by both EPA and Mass DEP locally in Massachusetts. So this is something that'll help with the next level of chemicals that have been identified by both the DEP and EPA to remove from the water system. We are above the thresholds that we are allowed to have in the water supply. So as I said earlier, the first plant will be completed late winter, early spring, and this second plant, which is the funding we're revoting, will be under construction by the end of the fiscal year, so sometime in the spring, early summer, with an expectation that it'll take us about 18 months to build the second plant. The expectation is that these two PFAS plants will be able to handle the existing water demand that we have in town. We will look in the future for a third PFAS water treatment plant. We have three green sand filter plants. The third one is down at Witch Pond on the Plainville Town Line. In order to operate that plant in the future, we will also need PFAS removal there, so that's something that'll come up in the future. But the immediate need with these first two plants will help us meet the requirements with future construction down the road.
My question is that I felt last town meeting that this was something new, that it was just being offered to towns, and it's almost like this health thing that's going on, someone's questioning, you know, how much is necessary and what direction. So when I was reading about other communities, I was reading that most of them haven't even considered this, they're like way behind this and its new concept. And I think it was attractive because it was like no interest. I believe that was one of the biggest attractions. And I just, I guess I needed to hear from you, why you think it's so important, because there were still questions about that concept, as I say, and how much it was needed, and I think we've got great water in Foxborough. My family never substituted, is this water?
This is water, yep.
Yeah. Substituted anything else, and they're all healthy as can be.
Yep, so the PFAS...
You know, this is something extra. Whether we're, the head of the class going and just did this, because it's a lot of money, $16 million. Anyway, I just wanted to know how much, are you convinced that it was absolutely necessary?
Yeah, so it's necessary, it's required. EPA and DEP have made this a requirement for anybody who's supplying water to the public to meet this new standard. The new standard needs to be met. This funding will allow us to meet it in their deadlines. The issue is if we don't do this, then they have the ability to start fining us, to the point where if we are in continued non-compliance, they can actually come in and force a private company to now run the water system on our behalf, which in that case, your rates are going to go a lot higher than they already are. So this is definitely required, there's no way around it. The original EPA requirement, we were below, then Massachusetts stepped in, we were still below, and then the EPA reduced it further to four parts per trillion for these chemicals, and we are above that standard. So this is definitely required. The 0% interest loan is definitely a nice benefit to the ratepayers in town, as well as that principal forgiveness. We think it's going to be about 10% that we'll get back or not have to pay, so.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Article 10 has to do with the town common sign-by-law, and this came from the select board, where they, in an effort to try to continue to improve communication with our community, as you all know, not everybody gets the Foxborough Reporter anymore. There are some, a couple thousand people on social media, but that leaves a lot of people that are not on social media. We have no efficient way to reach our citizens, and we really do want to ensure that we have a good way to communicate with the citizens. So as part of the strategic communication plan that the select board is working under, it was proposed that a improved digital sign be provided on the town common. The proposal would be that it exists in between the existing pillars on either end of the common, and this bylaw also includes one in front of town hall. So we have not looked at any pricing, this wouldn't mean it would happen tomorrow, this is just to see if the townspeople will support this improved communication method, and we'll go from there if that is the case, if it is supported. Okay, article 11 has to do with a tax title foreclosure. This is on 76 North High Street. This land was foreclosed upon a couple of years ago by the town after years of non-payment of taxes, and at this point, we are seeking the town's authorization to allow the select board to sell or auction this property to recoup the taxes and, for the purpose of recouping the taxes, really. So that's article 11. And article 12 is the same thing, except this one is for 175 Mechanic Street. That's the one we get the most calls on. I think you've all seen the building falling down next to the Sage School at 175 Mechanic. I could tell you that project, property's been subject of town tax title issues since 2010, and this is something we hope to be able to sell off this property to recoup the many taxes owned on this property. Article 13 has to do with the sewer map amendment. Chris, do you want to run us through that?
Sure. So our sewer map amendment articles are fairly standard. We generally have them at least once a year at town meeting, if not at both the annual and the special. This year we have, or this fall, we have a request from five properties to be added into the district. The North High Street and Walnut Street addresses are actually just carryovers from this past spring when we voted those in. And then we have two on Howard Ave and one at 75 Carpenter Street. So there is sewer on Howard Ave as well as Carpenter Street. Those three properties have started to look into connecting to the sewer as a group, so they came forward. Our estimated capacity for three of the properties is 200 gallons, they're three-bedroom houses. That's our general capacity that we sell for those three bedrooms. The 12 Howard Ave is a four-bedroom, so there's an extra 66 gallons there, there's 266 gallons being requested. And then 10 Howard Ave is actually a nine-bedroom group home. So currently, they're only occupying five of the bedrooms, but they're going to look to purchase whatever capacity they need when they actually make that connection. So there's 900 gallons of sewer is estimated capacity. So again, just a standard article, and this does not require them to connect, but this gives them the ability to move forward without having to wait for town meeting in the future.
Thanks, Chris. Article 14 is somewhat of a procedural matter. It has to do with streamlining some select board appointments. Every year, the select board reappoints the plumbing, wiring, and gas inspectors, and yet we tend to not have turnover in those positions. So the way we've worked with council to do it is that the appointments will stand until they're no longer employed by the town. So it just makes us streamlining that way. The veterans agent director goes to a three-year term to allow more continuity. That can't, that's a requirement of state law, the three years. And overall, we've been working really hard to tighten up the boards and committees, tracking process and reappointment processes. This is one request from my office, from Katie Lang, who does such a great job with that, to help keep it more streamlined. So again, not really changing much, but it would allow a little more efficiency. Okay, article 15 is zoning. So that's Catherine's. Catherine, do you want to go over, why are we talking about accessory dwelling units again?
Well, good reasons, I guess. So last fall, we did approve a motion that allowed the town to comply with state law regarding the accessory dwelling unit requirements out of the Affordable Homes Act. At the time, we are typically given six months to enact bylaws after the bill is signed by the state. So we enacted that four months after it was released. Another month or two later, the state issued their guidelines, and as a result of the interpretation by the Attorney General's Office of those subsequent guidelines, a few things were required to change in our adopted bylaw. One of those items is that we had limited accessory dwelling units to single-family dwellings, which many, many, many communities in Massachusetts did. However, the Attorney General's Office wants us to use the term principal dwelling, because they contemplate as of right ADUs on lots that could include two-family dwellings or multifamily dwellings as well. So that's one area where our bylaw was found to be in conflict with the state's released guidelines. The second area is requiring a special permit from the zoning board of appeals when an ADU is attached to a principal dwelling, and it increases the non-conforming nature of the principal dwelling. So the state's interpretation on this is that ADUs must be allowed by right. So if you have a home that is, say, not set back from the curb to the extent that the zoning bylaw allows, and you want to build an ADU off to the side of it, well, the front edge is going to be increasing that nonconformity. Typically, we would require a special permit, but the state has decided that the requirement of a special permit in a situation like that would be in opposition to the intent of by-right accessory dwelling units. So we need to change the language on that one. And the third area is probably the smallest area, but it's something we have to change. Basically, our previous bylaw had addressed parking situations where we can't have more than one, you know, we can't require, thank you, more than one parking space per unit if it's within a given diameter of a transit station. We had said commuter rail station, because that's what Foxborough has. We don't have fixed bus routes with bus stations, we don't have ferry terminals, et cetera. So the Attorney General's Office came back, and it's a very small change, but they said that we need to specifically say transit station as defined in the state statute. In this regard, they're probably looking ahead to say, well, maybe we don't have fixed bus route service now, but potentially 20 years from now, we will. So you need to make sure that the language is in compliance with the definition of a transit station rather than just referencing the type of transit station that you have right now. So all in all, you know, it's not a good thing to have to return to town meeting with items like this, but, you know, in light of the subsequent deliberations of the Attorney General's Office, those segments of our bylaw are out of line with the state law. So with this regulation, a yes vote would mean that our bylaw as a whole would become compliant with state law. A no vote would mean that we would have an incomplete bylaw. They have accepted the rest of the bylaw as it stands, but those specific areas would not be deemed as in compliance with state law. So what that does to the town is it means that our building commissioner would have to interpret both local and state law as it relates to any given situation, and if the state law is looser in its interpretation, we have to follow that. So it's, I personally, I believe that when you're in compliance with state law and you have a complete bylaw, that reduces the amount of confusion that individuals who are seeking to build ADUs and future building commissioners might have to encounter on these processes. It also allows for more protection than if you just allow the state law to take precedence over those areas.
Thank you, Catherine. Sounds like we don't really have a choice much.
Not much of one.
Okay.
We have a question, though.
And then, oh, go ahead, Rafaela.
Hi, I just have one quick question. I just wanted a clarification. In the original vote, we had the accessory dwelling units at 850 square feet?
Mm-hmm.
And we're moving it up to 900?
It was 900.
Was it 900? I thought I read the by... Okay, okay, I'll check again. Okay, thank you.
The question was relating to the maximum, the maximum square footage of an accessory dwelling unit. The question was whether that was 850 previously and increased to 900 square feet. It's my understanding that it was 900 square feet from the beginning. The state statute says that they're capped at either half the square footage of the domicile, so if it's a small house of like 1,200 square feet, you'd be capped at 600 for an ADU. But if you have a 3,000-square-foot home, you can't have a 1,500-square-foot ADU, that's a whole different house. So they cap it at 900 square feet.
Okay, and Catherine, do you want to close us out with the last article, article 16, with respect to the zoning base map?
Sure. So this is a project that came to us from our GIS specialist out of the Department of Public Works. Our zoning base map hasn't been updated since 1990, so that's been a long time. As zoning changes have been brought to town meeting, they've been approved as individual maps. There are a couple of reasons for this. In the 90s, the software and the technology that was used to create and generate zoning maps was AutoCAD, which is basically a computer-aided drafting program. It's challenging to take a huge document like a zoning base map and add to it every single town meeting. So they were approved as amendments to the base map itself. What this article would do is consolidate all the changes that have been voted in subsequent town meetings since 1990 into one usable base map. It would also change the format to geographic information systems. Geographic information systems is the most modern technology for this type of application. It allows for a couple of different features that we really like. Number one, much easier to integrate changes to zoning maps from this point onward. You can take the base map, you can snip out a portion of it, you can put in something new. It's very easy to make changes like that for subsequent changes to the base map. The second thing we really like about it is that we'll be able to use this base map and have a site housed on the town's website, where you can take the zoning map and then you can toggle off different layers to it. So if you're in a water resource protection area, or if you're in the Foxborough Common Overlay District, you can see exactly where those lines intersect on top of the base map itself. So it'll be a lot more user-friendly, it'll be a lot easier for us to make subsequent changes. And really, when it comes to anything substantive, this does very little. The only substantive change we're making is one addition, really, to the bylaw, and that is because when we were going through this process, we encountered a section where the zoning bylaw says you should consider measurements from these... the zoning bylaw says you should consider measurements from these items. And it lists, you know, the center of the right of way, the property lines, et cetera. And it goes down a descending list. It doesn't specify the order of precedence of those items. Typically, in a legal document, you assume if there's no order that's specified, that it goes from top to bottom. And all we're doing is including language that clarifies that, that says that each will be considered in accord, each to be considered in the order in which set forth. So it's a pretty minor change. Most of this article is not substantive, it's more procedural, it's more administrative, and it's more functional. I think that everybody will have a much better experience when they're looking at zoning maps after this.
The way I summarize it, Catherine's very eloquent, but the way I summarize is you take a map with just a bunch of streets on it and some lines drawn on it, and now the zoning map will be overlaid on a parcel map. So you'll be able to actually see where your property sits and the district in which you sit, rather than right now, what Catherine references, you know, it would be 500 from the center line of the road. Well, that, we don't even know where that is and it's getting out our rulers and whatnot. So the best part of this is now it will be tied to parcels and you'll be able to see it. And I think it'll be a lot easier for everyone to use. Come on up.
Does it change anything about when you go to vote on from zoning industrial to mixed use or anything like that?
They can't hear you, sorry.
It doesn't change any, going from industrial to mixed use or it doesn't-
We're not changing any of the zoning.
No, we did consider potentially, as part of this process, there's something called a split parcel. So you might own a single-family home, but by quirk of how the town used to be laid out, maybe you have like the last 10 feet of your property is zoned industrial or something like that. And that can cause some confusion. Sometimes it can cause, you know, different things to be built on your property than just the single-family homes, for example. And we considered that as part of this project, but we backed away from it. We'd rather just set a good foundation for now and consider split parcels at a subsequent date.
So at this meeting on the 27th, are we not voting on the zoning changes for the Napont Street?
No.
Not, no.
We are not?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you coming. Joan, you got another one? You, we were almost out. What happened?
I'm reading here, this is just from the reporter last week. Voters will be asked to permit the town to sell, no, excuse me, Paige Duncan. Recently adopted fiscal protocols will make some of the recurring transfers unnecessary going forward. Maybe that's what I was referring to in the beginning when I first came here. What does that have to do with?
I think that had to do with the fire stabilization account, I'm guessing. I don't know that article off the top of my head, but-
According to town manager Paige Duncan, recently adopted fiscal protocols. And that's, I'm saying, that was my concept, that something had been changed, increased, but not, but too much. So fiscal protocols, I'm wondering what those are, and it's probably what I'm trying to recollect. Sorry if you don't have an answer to that, we can check out later.
Yeah, I think it's probably the fire stabilization. We haven't changed any fiscal protocols that I'm aware of, beyond getting rid of the fire stabilization account and turning it into a revolving account.
Okay, and the other one was for the schools. Oh, did you ever get active in our town regarding a proposal, I guess other people have seen, I only get a chance to see some of these things as they're passing, that they were requesting, I guess it was someone in Walpole that was involved in education, that they take monies from the soccer World Cup, direct the largesse. In other words, the monies that the, I don't know, cities, towns, whatever, businesses, almost like a tax, and fund the aides in the school department that they never have had an opportunity to get their proper salary, wages, whatever, beyond her. And they've always been lagging behind and that they really deserve to be more highly paid. And it sounded like a wonderful idea.
But we can't, I can tell you, we can't pay salaries with one-time revenue, so therein lies the rub on that one. The World Cup is a one-time event. And if we gave a bunch of raises because of that, what would we do the next two years when we don't have World Cup?
Yeah.
So I think we can leave it at that.
Okay.
If you guys have anything further to add, I think that kind of sums up the problem with that.
Because some of the people that are paid in the school departments don't really make a decent living at all, so.
All right, with that, have a great day and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Don't forget to come to town meeting, October 27, 7:00 PM.